Is on, so.
Okay.
I call to order the Rosemont Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, October 27th, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty. Justice. For all. Okay, here goes my video again. I'm sure it's gonna be blurry at the beginning. Sorry about that. Okay, as we call tonight's meeting to order, I will just share in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. In order to practice social distancing, all planning commission meetings are being held virtually at this time. Using Zoom. Citizens can watch and participate in a variety of ways. And for specific details to participate in this meeting, please view the calendar page on the city website. And let's see, I think the rest of this, we should be, you'll notice we'll do a few things differently. Most commonly, all votes will be done via roll call led by Stacy. During the audience input and public hearing portion of tonight's meeting, the public will be able to speak using the microphone in their device. If using the Zoom web app or their phone. Staff will respond to public questions during the public hearing. This is not normally done until the end, but due to the different format, we're gonna answer them as we go. Letters and emails that were received tonight as part of the public comment will be reviewed at the beginning of each public hearing item tonight. If you are participating online during the meeting, you'll have the option to use the raise your hand feature during portions of tonight's meeting. Staff will call on you at the appropriate time and they will unmute your microphone so you can speak. We do ask that you say, state your name and address for the record upon beginning your comment. And I'll cover those instructions again as we get to the public hearing portion as well. If you're having any issues, please use the chat to communicate with us via Zoom. It's a different format for us all. We've been doing it for a while now, so I feel like we're, we got it under control, but please, if you are attending tonight's meeting and have questions, you can use the Zoom webinar chat to correspond with city staff and myself during the meeting. And with that, we'll move on to the agenda. Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
No, there's not.
Is there any input from audience, from the audience on tonight's agenda? So at this time, anyone that has input that is not for an item already on the agenda, you may raise your hand at this time and we will unmute you to speak. And seeing, I don't see any hands raised, Anthony. Okay, we'll move forward. We have two items on our consent agenda tonight, the approval of the September 22nd, 2020 regular meeting minutes. And a request by US Home Corp for the approval of a final plat for Meadow Ridge 4th Edition. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Seeing done, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chair. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Schmuzik and seconded by Commissioner Freeman. Stacy, will you take role?
Kenninger.
Aye.
Marlo.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Schmuzik.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Motion passes and that concludes the consent agenda item of tonight's, tonight's meeting. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing item. The request by Tamrec Land Development for a zoning map amendment preliminary plat and planned unit development master development plan with rezoning for Arden Place, and I will turn that over to Kyle.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. Welcome tonight. Glad to see you all. Can you all hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna switch over to my presentation then to go through this request. So bear with me here, you would think after several months now, I would have this down. There we go. Okay, you're seeing my screen now?
Yes, we are.
Perfect. I'm gonna go to full screen. I'm gonna minimize all you guys. There we go. All right, and I'm thinking I'm gonna start at the beginning of the presentation.
That's a good place to start.
Yes, so the request is for, there's three main parts of the request in front of us tonight, and all of it's related to a new preliminary plat called Arden Place within the city of Rosemount. So three requests are zoning map amendment, planned unit development master plan, and preliminary plat. So this is being requested by Tamrec Land Development, and the property owner is BBM Real Estate Investment Property. Bruce Minia is more commonly, is a person more commonly known with that group, so that would be the property owner. So tonight, you're being asked to approve those three different requests. In terms of Arden Place, just a quick overview, the proposed plat would be 216 total lots. Of those, there would be 79 single-family lots and then 137 townhouse lots. Thing is really touchy here. This is the site location we're looking at, so it's the area bound by the red here. Just generally where this is located is about a quarter mile to the west of Akron Avenue, and Akron Avenue was the road. You can see my pointer here running north and south. It is also located just off of Bonheur Path, which is a road that runs east and west here, one of the city's major collector roads going throughout the community. In relation to Highway 42 down here is located a little further north of that. And just on the north side of Union Pacific Railroad tracks, which run roughly southwest to northeast to the community in this particular portion of the city. So it's just a quick overview where things are. I think the next map gives us a little better view of what's going on with the surrounding area. This is just a more recent photograph. It's actually was taken as of September 27th, 2020, so relatively new. I think as we point out in the staff report, this is a portion of the city that has seen quite a bit of growth and development over the past five to 10 years. So like maybe point some of these areas out for those who is familiar where this is and then just kind of look at what's happening in this area. So first of all, the property we're talking about is right here. And this is the western portion of a larger piece of property that was originally under one ownership. The eastern part of the site, which is this area right here, was split off maybe two or three years ago and purchased by Independent School District 196. Their long-range plans for the site include the construction of a new elementary school on this area. So they have bought the whole property with the intent of doing that. So that is split off. It's not part of the application, but want to point that out that at one point, this was all part of one larger site. So the applicant's property is over here. It's just over 52 acres in size. And right now, as you can see, the use, historical use and the use at present is a farm field. The only other kind of major feature, I guess, that is currently existing on the property are these windrows of trees along both the western and then the eastern property line. So in terms of what else is happening here, Bonheur Path is the road that runs by the property, which is this one right here. Akron Avenue just gets oriented again is over here with the Union Pacific Railway right here. We have several subdivisions that are either under construction or have been built in the recent past, including Greystone. Over here to the east of Akron Avenue. Preswick Place, the development down here, which is south of the railroad tracks immediately across from this particular project. As you'll see here, the last few phases of Preswick Place are under construction right now, and so this is getting rapidly completed and will be over the next course of the next year or so. The Bloomfield Meadows was a subdivision that was approved a little while longer ago, maybe in the five to 10-year range, and includes a mix of single-family and townhouses in the southern portion of their property. This is an extension of Autumn Path that will go further north. And with this particular photograph, you can see the Autumn Path Road under construction right now.
Say, Kyle, can I just for a second? Cam or Anthony, I saw in the chat, we had some residents that were at City Hall for the meeting. Do you? Do you know if they're still there or any updates? I'm wondering if we should flip this topic and give them time to jump on the Zoom?
Yeah, they aren't here.
Okay. I just want to make sure we give the residents an opportunity. Kenneth, I'm not, Anthony, can we unmute? Kenneth, just see if he knows if there's more residents that'll join via Zoom.
One second.
Thank you.
All right.
Say, Kenneth, you should have the ability to unmute on your, your device and speak now. Can you tell us if you think there's more residents that'll join on Zoom?
Kenneth, you're able to talk. I've enabled your mic.
Hmm. Okay, maybe he can't speak. I just, I wondered if maybe it would make sense to flip and go to our second item tonight and give people time to recalibrate and jump online if they wanted to join for this. Any thoughts from staff on that?
We certainly can.
Oh, Kenneth says it's not working. He's not able to talk. Thanks, Kenneth, for chatting with us. Do you? Do you think that the residents are all back home now and some are jumping online? Or do you have any idea, Kenneth? I apologize that you guys weren't aware of it, the meeting changing to Zoom. He's trying to log on a different way. You know what? How about if we, can we flip to do Anthony's and give the residents time? I don't want the residents to miss what Kyle is going over.
That's fine with me. If you want me to stop my sharing here and then we can come back to it.
Yeah, that would be great. So this time we will move to the request by Christina Dot Seth for a variance from the side yard setback standard for a two-story structure and a variance from the lot coverage maximum to construct in addition to the principal structure. And I'll turn that over to Anthony.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
As you said, this was a request to, for a variance to construct in addition to expand the property here in the R1A residential zoning district. I'm gonna pull up my presentation here. Okay. So the request is for two variances. One is from the side yard setback for a two-story structure. And then the second is for a variance from the lot coverage maximum, increasing that from 30% to 34%. One thing to note within the R1A zoning district, there is a little more unusual setbacks standard for side yards. One-story structures have a five-foot setback. Two-story structures have a 10-foot setback. The applicant is requesting to construct in addition on the second floor of her house. So it won't be getting any closer than it already is to the neighboring property, but it would require a variance from that standard. The property in question is located on Camaro Lane. As you can see, this is Highway 3 or South Robert Trail. And then this would be Cambrian Commons. This is the Culvers, and then here is the I fail to remember which church that one is. I believe it's the Methodist Church. But it's on this loop road that is, doesn't have any outlets. Here's just for a little bit of context, what the house looks like currently. It's a split-level structure. The applicant is proposing to add a second story above the garage area and the living room area. Expanding it to the back to provide a main floor bedroom suite, and then a little bit in the front to allow for some room for the stairway to get up to the top. So here's just the site plan showing the house and the proposed addition. As I said, there is an extension onto the back as well as a small extension under the front. No, no variance is needed for the front addition due to the fact that they are able to maintain the 30-foot front yard setback. Here are the elevations showing you what the house would look like after it's constructed. As you can see, the existing two-level area or one and a half-story area on the right-hand side would be accompanied by in addition to the single-story ground level area above with the deck on the front and a small portico entry area. So then just to provide a little bit of idea of how the house will work on the interior. When you walk in the front door, there's steps going up to the second, second floor. The, the living room will shift from this front to the rear of the structure where the master bedroom and bathroom is located. And then the second floor will have some family room recreation area, a couple bedrooms and some other auxiliary rooms for different uses. So when, when reviewing variances, there's five findings that must be made in order to approve the variance. The first two findings are pretty, pretty standard. Basically is the use that's being proposed on the, on the property going to be conforming with the zoning and zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan, which it is, the use of the structure will not be changing from a single-family home. The third finding is that they're proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner. So it's, it's not unreasonable to want to add on to a home, especially in these in these, in this older area where the homes are a little smaller than many of the newer construction throughout the city. The fourth is that there are unique circumstances which are not created by the landowner. The, the biggest thing is that the lot area is smaller than minimum required by the zoning ordinance, which creates that difficulty in meeting that 30% lot coverage standard. And then the side yard setback. It'd be more of a burden to, to ask the applicant to alter their plans than it is on the, on the neighboring property. Of which staff should note that I did send out an email received from the property owner that would be most impacted by the addition in support of the variance request. And then finally, the granting of the variance does not alter the essential character, and staff finds that the essential character would be maintained through the, through the granting of the variance. So while it'll be a little bit larger home than others on the site. There are other two-stories homes that have been added on in the neighborhood as well. So with that, I guess I can take any questions you may have. I know the applicant is in attendance and who may be able to speak to any questions that staff is unable to answer.
Thank you, Anthony. Are there any questions from the commission at this time? Okay, seeing done, this item is a public hearing item this evening. And so we will move forward with opening the public hearing at this time. Just a reminder to all of those joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. And Anthony will go ahead and unmute your mic and allow you to speak. And we ask that you state your name and address for the record at the beginning of your public comment. Before we jump in and invite the public to comment, I will just note that as Anthony mentioned, we did receive one letter from a neighbor. And Anthony, you've stated that this is the neighbor most impacted by this addition. Is that correct?
Yeah, that would be the one on the southern side, the side of the, the house that is receiving the two-story addition.
Okay, thank you. So in that letter, they were in support of the addition. And has no, have stated that they have no problems with the project moving forward. They are in support of any variance needed for this project to be completed. And that comment came from a Trigvy Scar, Scare, Scar. I'm not sure how to pronounce the last name, but that letter was received and recorded, and the address was 14785 Camaro Lane in Rosemount. And with that, we will open up the public hearing for any comments from the public or from the applicant at this time.
So Christina, if you have anything you would like to add, feel free to unmute your microphone and, and speak freely at this time. It doesn't sound like there were a lot of questions from the commission specifically related to this request.
Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
We can hear you, yep.
All right, great. No, I have no questions. I'm excited for this addition to get done because this will help me with my needs for everything to be on one level because I am disabled, so this will make things a lot easier for my life. But if you have any questions, I'm more than, feel free to ask.
Thank you. Christina, I know we have it in the application, but can you just state your full name and address for the record?
Yes, ma'am. It is Christina Marie Dot Seth, and my address is 14775 Camaro Lane, Rosemount, Minnesota, 55068.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I do just want to note too that there are a couple of conditions that staff is recommending to be included with the resolution that, that basically memorializes that this is a single-family home within a single-family zoning district, and that's based on our conversations with the applicant, the way that they intended, but by, by recording a restrictive covenant on the deed, it will be also a way to inform future owners that that's in, in fact, the case.
Yes, that's true.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from anyone on the public hearing this evening?
I don't see any hands up in the audience.
Sounds great. With that, I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schmuzik. And Stacy, will you please take role?
Kenninger.
Aye.
Marlo.
Aye.
Freeman. Schmuzik.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
And motion passes. The public hearing is now closed. Are there any final comments or questions from the commission before we move forward for a vote on this? And just a reminder, we are, the planning commission does act as the Board of Appeals and Adjustments for the city of Rosemount. And that is the what we are acting as, as we approve or deny this request this evening. And there is a 10-day appeals period, so anybody that is watching this video today or now or within the next few days, there is a 10-day from today appeal process if anyone does wish to appeal this. Otherwise, it will be a final decision. This does not go to city council. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the planning commission acting as word of appeals and adjustments adopt a resolution approving requests subject to the following conditions numbered one and two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion made by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Rivera. Stacy, will you take role?
Kenninger.
Aye.
Marlo.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Schmuzik.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Motion passes. This, this item has passed this evening and as I said earlier, does not move forward to the city council, and so this is a final, the final step for this item tonight with the exception of the 10-day appeal process. Thank you. Good luck with your, your remodeling, your build-out. We will now move back to the previous item with Tamrec Land Development. I know we've had a few more attendees join in, so hopefully those that were at City Hall have had an opportunity to jump on the Zoom meeting. I do want to apologize to those that showed up at City Hall this evening. Our agenda and calendar are updated with the location of the meeting. The mailed notice, as I understand it, did not have the Zoom information. Those are usually sometimes even prior to when we, we make that final decision if we're gonna be in person or on Zoom. So my apologies to, my apologies to those that showed up at City Hall this evening. Hopefully you're online with us now. We did shift this around, so we gave you guys a little more time, hopefully to get home and get online. So Kyle, I will turn it back over to you to continue walking us through the Tamrec Land Development request.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me now?
You are. We can hear you.
Yeah, good. I also would echo the apology here for folks that were, were coming to City Hall. I think we can all agree that will be nice to see everybody at City Hall again here sometime, hopefully in the near future. So with that, I'll just keep going with my presentation since I was very early on here. So I was just kind of showing you know, where in the city this particular project is located, and then from there, we'll get into some of the details about what's being requested. So as you may be recall here, I was talking about the location, pointing out some of the subdivisions around this. Again, given the nature of this being near and within an area that's, that's rapidly changing in the community. The most recent photograph we see here does reflect some of that. And again, as pointing out, Autumn Path right now is under construction on the north side of Bonheur Path. This touches just barely the Bella Vista subdivision, which is right here, and then extends further north. And you can kind of make out here that the Caramore Crossing subdivision, which is at the intersection of Bonheur and Akron Avenue is also under construction. So you can see some construction vehicles out here and some earth movement taking place right now. And then finally, this is in close proximity to the Flint Hills soccer fields. Right here, this facility is nearly completely built out by the city with the fields and so forth and trails and other amenities that go with this. So ultimately, this particular subdivision is located again in an area of the city that's rapidly changing. But that has had several amenities built out over time, and as things have changed within the past several years. So kind of moving on then, in terms of the request, want to just quickly highlight the comprehensive plan status for this property. Right now, the property is currently guided for low-density residential development. And also want to point out that the R1 and R2 zoning is consistent with that particular designation. And you'll see in some of the slides later on here how that's being applied to the site based on the location of the single-family versus the townhouses. The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment. All the properties currently got zoned AG agricultural, which is very consistent with the city's, you know, essentially holding zone for properties that are guided for urban development where urban services have not been extended yet or development hasn't occurred. The applicant is proposing to change zoning therefore from the Ag District to R1 single, or I'm sorry, R1 low-density residential or single-family residential. Then R2 moderate-density residential, and both those would have a PUD designation in addition to that, as we'll note later on as well. Overall, there's 52 acres or a little more than 52 acres included in the subdivision request. So the first map here is the future land use map, showing you what's going on in this part of the city. The site that we're talking about again is highlighted in the darker red color here. So this is the applicant's property. As you'll see here, most of the property around it has that same designation of low-density residential and part of the city's urban residential area. The 2030 Musa line is this pink dash line up here, so this extends quite a ways away from this particular piece of property and includes some of the subdivisions that are under construction north of this particular site. And then just maybe one other feature to point out here, there is a smaller area of moderate-density residential or medium-density residential in the city's comprehensive plan located adjacent to the site. Just to the west in the Meadows of Bloomfield Development, and that shows up in some of those air photographs in the form of the townhouses you see in that particular development. Otherwise, in terms of parks, you'll see the Flint Hills soccer fields here, the larger facility located off of Akron Avenue. The Meadows of Bloomfield Park located a little further to the west on Bonheur Path. And then some of the parks in the Preswick Development and further to the southwest with other developments and other parks. One of the challenges with this particular site, as we'll see some, from some of the maps and drawings coming up here, is the railroads that does act as a boundary and barricade from, you know, individuals that might want to travel from this subdivision into other parts of the city, including further to the south. But there is a regional trail that's going up on Akron Avenue. I shouldn't say regional, but a multi-purpose trail along Akron Avenue that will type across the railroad tracks eventually. And then as we'll see here, there are some trails planned within this development to tie into other developments. Moving on to zoning, this is the proposed zoning change. This is the map showing what that looks like. So the existing zoning is that green color agricultural. That would be changing to the mix of R1 or single-family residential up here in the lighter yellow, and then the moderate-density R2 zoning down here. And this follows the boundary of the area between the single-family homes and the townhouses. So in terms of the other details of the request here, the applicant is requesting a planned unit development, and so the, the application includes a preliminary or master development plan that essentially is for the 79 single-family residential lots, and these lots will all have a general width of about 65 feet in width. So very typical of more recent subdivisions that have been approved within the city of Rosemount. And then the application would also include 137 townhouse lots. And these are all, you know, being developed in either three, four, or six-unit, single-family attached structures. And one of the key provisions of the city's R2 zoning, and that allows it to be considered a lower density or moderate density, is the fact that that district limits the number of homes in a single building to six units. So you'll see that kind of carried out with this particular project. Because they're requesting a PUD, the applicant is requesting some exceptions from the city's zoning standards. And again, as we point out in the staff report, these are all very typical of more recent subdivisions of the community where developers are asking for somewhat smaller lots, somewhat smaller lot widths, with the intention of either increasing or improving the density within the project and providing a different mix of housing than a larger lot would otherwise would, would allow. So with that, the PUD exceptions include a minimum lot area of 8,000 square feet, minimum lot with a 65-feet setbacks, front, rear. Minimum lot with a 65 feet setbacks, front rear, front side rear 25 feet, seven and a half feet, and then 25 feet in the rear. And then a maximum lot coverage of either 30 or 40% depending on the size of the lot, and again, all these are very similar again to other recent PUDs. We include some examples in the staff report of how that compares to other recent subdivisions. Then finally, one thing that's a little different here is, and we'll point this out on the maps that follow. The applicant's three replacement plan does indicate that they aren't meeting the city's requirement for the total number of caliper inches to be replaced on the site. They're proposing to replace 670 caliper inches, which leaves the the property about 400 or between 400. And 500 caliper inches short of meeting that particular standard, and I'll point out what that looks like here in the maps that are following. In terms of the preliminary plat, Arden Place is the name of the proposed preliminary plat. It includes a plating of individual lots, but also some common space outlets around the townhouse units. There are several stormwater retention ponds that are being planted with the project as an outline. It includes both a mix of public and private streets, public being serving the single family area and then private streets serving the townhouses. The proposal does include a new shared road with the school district property to the east. So the road would follow the property line between those two properties and then essentially would provide access to the school district down down the down the line. There are a series of sidewalks and trails for planned as well as well as utility extensions, mostly coming from the east. And there is no new parkland dedication proposed with this project, as you'll see from the memo from the park director. The city does have planned parks in this area and the vicinity of this property. And therefore, no additional parkland is required on this particular site to serve the immediate area. So just going through some of the more detailed application materials, bear with me on these because there's. The property is large enough that you're going to see the the north arrow kind of flip a little bit here, so I'll try to keep us oriented as we go through this. And then I tried to pull out some of the more critical site plans and drawings. Also, I'm not including everything in the presentation tonight, but we can certainly pull that up if there's questions about a specific element of the project. So the first map here is just a survey showing the property and what's happening on the property. As you can see, there's not much going on right now other than the farming activity that's taking place. So this is the north is oriented this way, so this is Bonner Path on the north part of the site. The Union Pacific Railline running down here on the south part of the site and then the east eastern and western property boundaries. So the key thing to point out here is that Autumn Path right now has been built and was constructed with the Meadows of Bloomfield Development, so that is in place. A lot of the access to this particular subdivision will come off of this this particular road, which again is existing. The other commander feature that you see on this is a rolling topography gradually. Sloping from a lower area here on Bonner Path back towards the railroad tracks. As you'll see from the grading plans, the applicant is proposing to. Lower this area to provide for infiltration and some buffering from the railroad. But ultimately, it's a relatively flat site and fairly easy to be balanced based on the existing topography. And then finally, we have the windrow of trees that you see here, both on that eastern and then the western property line. Otherwise, the rest of the site is relatively bare in terms of trees or other vegetation. So moving on to the preliminary plat, this is the overall layout of lots, and again. I think what I did here is this showed the the split between the north and south, so we can see a little more detail what's happening, and I think I'll probably jump through those before. Or rather than spending a lot of time on this particular map. So the north part of the subdivision looks like this, again, Bonner Path running east and west here. Autumn Path running north and south, heading into the Meadows of Bloomfield Development. And then a new proposed street here that would line up with Ardro Avenue is the name of the street up in Karamo Crossing. That particular street is coming down right on the property line, and so the applicant is proposing to carry that forward through this intersection of Bonner Path. And down into this development. Ultimately, the street will then venture off to the east either via a new intersection or via direct connection to serve the school district. So the roads serving the single family homes are fairly straightforward, you see an east-west route here, providing access to those that first layer of homes. Comes down and then loops through the middle part of the subdivision to provide access to the homes proposed there. And then for the townhouse area, this would was proposed for the townhouses as a private driveway or a private road. That would connect into Autumn Path on the west. Loop through the site further to the south, as we'll see here in just a second, and then come back up and then connect into Ardro Avenue over on the east side of the property. And so looking at that south sides, this is what this looks like again with those townhouses running along that that new private street that would loop along the bottom of the site or south part of the site. And that then back up here to the new street called Ardro Avenue. There are a few little connections here for the townhouses, one would add a small little stub here to serve. A small segment of the townhouses and then at the request of staff. The applicant has provided another connection up into the single family area, so that about midway through the townhouses. There'll be another access point where folks that are coming to the north or wanting to travel between these two neighborhoods will be able to do so without having to go all the way around. And then come back down to the south. And then finally, down here, and this will show up a little better in some of the grading plans that we have. Is a series of both infiltration and retention areas for stormwater ponding. Which serves a couple purposes, one is it provides the the needed capacity for retention of stormwater on the site infiltration. It also provides a nice buffer from the railroad tracks. The city does require additional setbacks if those lots are planted up to the railroad right away. So this does give the applicant a little more efficient use of the property by being able to make use of this for stormwater ponding. I think you'll see with some of the other developments in the area, other developers have followed a similar kind of model to. Provide that additional space while keeping some land available for stormwater. And then finally, the applicant is showing a dog park here in the extreme southeast portion of the site. This would not be a public park, this would be an amenity for the neighborhood and. I think the concept there is that it would provide some open space, especially for residents, the townhouses area would also be a neighborhood amenity in an area that. Again, is is works well for buffering and screening from the adjoining properties from the railroad track. So kind of flipping on here then, I've showing you just kind of the north-south split with the roads for the project. Just to further illustrate some of the trail connections mostly. So you see on this particular plan, you'll see some of these units, how they're lining up for the townhouses. Again, same configuration of streets as we showed last time. And then each of the streets within the subdivision does have a sidewalk connection, so you see a sidewalk on one side of all streets that are proposed within the subdivision. Including the loop road coming through the middle of the site right here. There already is an existing trail slash sidewalk along Autumn Path, so the development would tie into that very nicely. And then one thing staff points out in the staff in the staff report is that right now there's no sidewalks or trails shown on this extension of Ardro Avenue. Staff is recommending that a sidewalk be added to the street consistent with the other streets in the subdivision. And to provide that connection for pedestrians that might be heading north of Bonner Path. At present, there are no trails or sidewalks in Bonner Path, staff also notes as one of the conditions of approval. That the applicant grade the area on within their side or on next to Bonner Path. To allow for that future trail connection at some point in time if the city decides to install that road somewhere down the line for that trail somewhere down the line. Finally, looking at the south part of the site, one of the key features of the south part of the property. Is an east-west trail that would connect at the western property line, run through the site on just the north of the stormwater ponds. And then you either connect into a future extension into the school site, but ultimately loop back into the private street system up here. Then you'll see along this particular trail, there are a few spots for the applicant is showing connections back into the townhouse area. You know, here about halfway through and then another one about two thirds of the way through on that street. There also is a sidewalk shown along a private driveway that would connect into the public streets up here, so this would be. Kind of the boundary and between single family area here, townhouses here with that sidewalk connection. Consistent with recent city approvals, there are no sidewalks shown within the townhouse area. Becomes much more difficult to do so because of the width of the street that's proposed and the fact that it's private. Moving on here, then I didn't show you the grading on the north part of the site, this is just the overall grading plan for the south side, you can see there's mostly the applicants trying to or attempting to grade. A relatively level site here for the townhouses and the single family homes creating the building pads for each of those those structures. This shows you a little more detail what the stormwater pounding would look like, both for the pension area here and infiltration with the dog park right here, so. Obviously, some great changes here to get the pond in place and then providing that additional separation to the railroad track. The applicant did submit a tree preservation plan, all the trees that are on the site are located in these on the eastern and western property lines as I alluded to earlier. The tree inventory does indicate that the vast majority of these trees are either box elder or Siberian elm. Siberian elm is generally considered a invasive species, so not a preferred type of tree within the community, and they're also considered softwoods, so again. Not given the same level of designation in our in our ordinances, however. They are required to be counted and are required to be mitigated if they're removed from the property. So that all is taken into account with the numbers that you have in in the report. The applicant is proposing to eliminate all the trees that are on the property right now, so removal of all these trees on those property lines. And then with the landscape plan, they are proposing to mitigate up to a certain number. Based on the numbers that I had shown previously. Now, one of the comments that staff does have with the application and one of the conditions that are recommended is that the applicant work to try to preserve additional trees. Along this western property line, and in particular, staff was interested in. Working with the applicant to try to save one of the the, I guess, the most significant tree on the site, there's one tree that's classified as a heritage tree, which means it's a hardwood. It's a bur oak and it's over a certain size. So it does appear that there could be some modifications done with the slight moving of the the townhouse units or pads. To try to preserve that particular tree and then with that adjusting the grading so that there could be some additional tree preservation along this area. Again, the trees that are there, other than that that heritage tree are not real high quality, but they do provide a nice green. Space and buffering and separation from the development to the west to the new subdivision. Otherwise, for the applicant to be able to provide the roads and access and so forth. A lot of the trees do need to come down primarily because of the location of Ardro Avenue. Right on the property line where most of those trees already exist, otherwise that would require. A major reconfiguration of roads here and is not something the city is recommending with this particular project. And then this is the the raw landscape plan, I'm sorry that this is a little smaller, maybe a little more difficult to see. But the applicant has put together a plan that provides for trees along the roads and along the front portions of the lots as again required by our code. You know, that that particular ratio is one tree per lot plus additional tree for those properties that are on corner, so right here is an example. There is a more substantial planting plan shown along Bonner Path to help provide some additional screening and separation from the busier road from those backyards. And then the the remainder of the trees will be planted in spaces within common areas. Many of which are located between in the transition area between the townhouses to the single family areas, which are those located along here. With a scattering of trees located around the stormwater ponds and in the communal spirit, open space areas down to the south of the site. The applicant did provide a phasing plan, generally the plan is to move from the eastern property boundary, which is the phase one area shown here. And gradually working their way to the west. The reason for this particular plan is the fact that the current sewer connection is coming through the school district property is located down here in this portion of the site. So most of the site will be served by a grabbing line that will again tie into that eastern property boundary. The engineer has noted that there may be some additional changes to the to the sanitary sewer plan. That would allow some gravity service in the southwest portion of the site, the applicant. Is encouraged to look at that and consider that as a change to the plans, mostly because it does. Allow them to raise the the lowest point of the sanitary sewer for the entire system, and that would save in grading and also saving some costs there for. Installation of that line. And it's certainly able to handle that based on the grade, so. A small portion may be able to come back through gravity up to the west while most of the site will come down here and head to the east. The applicant did provide some renderings of the homes as per our PUD requirements, and so. This is just one of the examples of the sheets that you have in your packet showing a typical home and floor plan for the for the buildings proposed for the single family area. These are all primarily single family living facilities or single family living dwellings with three car garages. And so the 65 foot width is enough for that third stall garage and all the host plans that they've submitted indicate that they would have that that third stall. In terms of the townhouses, this is the elevations for the typical townhouse design or townhouse unit. The units are essentially garage level with some general space below with living space on the second level for each of the units. So these are two-story units and again are typical of what we see for single family attached dwellings in the community. This is a drawing showing the rendering of what that would look like, again, each of those units would have two two-car garages and would be two-story units. Just flipping back quick to this drawing, I would note that both the single family and the proposed townhouses design. Do incorporate brick and stone in the front of the buildings, which has been a requirement for almost all of the city's PUDs. For residential development within the community. In terms of other general comments here, in terms of land use, the net density for this this development will be 4.1 units per acre. And I want to point that out because that does fall within the city's low density residential land use guidance, which allows for. One to six units per acre while still being considered that low density residential. For the building design, I talked about the PUD requirements, that is being carried forward as a recommendation. Of of requiring that the applicant provide at least three and a half feet of wainscoting, a brick or stone on the front facade of each building. Or incorporate other design elements that would help, you know, enhance the appearance of each building, whether it's a porch, side entry garage. Then finally, that no more than 70% lap siding be used within each structure. So again, it looks like based on the drawing submitted that the applicant should be able to comply with that, but that this is another requirement the city's maintained and required for all of its residential PUDs. For the trees and landscaping part of it, based for the in terms of the PUD exception. Staff did recommend approval of that exception based on the fact that many of the trees that were counted. And count towards those mitigation requirements for relatively low quality trees. Staff does want to see the developer work to try to save more of those trees on the western property line. And is hoping that that can be accomplished through some minor changes to the grading plan on in that area in that part of the site. Other general comments for sidewalks and trails, we talked about adding a sidewalk to Ardro Avenue, that's the shared road with with the school district. In terms of the southern trail, as you'll as you saw from the drawing. The southern trail right now is is shown as connecting into the western property line, however, there is a bit of a gap between. The next trail within the private, the next private trail within the adjacent Meadows of Bloomfield Development. As of right now, the applicant has not had any conversations with with that homeowner's association about tying into that trail. The city hasn't initiated any conversations, but that is something that will need to be be discussed and routed through that association if it's to happen. So one of the conditions of approval does note that the trail either needs to. Extend into that adjoining development with an agreement with that neighboring property. Or it needs to be rerouted internal to the development in order to avoid any connections that would not be authorized. Or would not be allowed based on the private ownership of that trail system. So having said that, staff is also recommending that the trails within this particular development. All have public access easements, which would allow for, you know, the public to access the trails and utilize the trails. Both internal to the development and for in those trails that access them to the sidewalks, they're also part of the public street system. You know, again, long term, I think the city would like to see that connection made into the Meadows of Bloomfield Development, but there's some work to be done with that association in order to make that happen. The other kind of feature here, other issue that that comes up is that because the school district will be building an elementary school on the adjacent site. It certainly makes sense if the city would work to try to preserve as much public access as possible off the roads for any any pedestrians and children that want to access the school property. And then finally, I think I mentioned this earlier, staff is recommending that as part of the conditions of approval. That the applicant be required to either grade or. Develop a site in a way that doesn't prohibit a future trail connection along Bonner Path West. This again would be a city responsibility because it's on one of the city's collector roads. But for now, the city is asking that the developer work with work with the grading to ensure that that doesn't preclude a trail in the future. Then I think the last kind of comment here from staff is that the other kind of major issue with this project at this time. Really deals with the extension of Ardro Avenue or that shared road between the development and the school district. There does seem to be easements in place that allows for public access, those need to be obtained from the school. The applicant has put together a draft, but we'll be working with the school district here in the next few weeks to finalize those easements. And then the final alignment needs to be identified that meets the requirements of, you know, both this project for access, but also. The school's expectations for being able to access the property. And in particular, to deal with some of the expected traffic levels in the morning and afternoons, either before or after school. The school district also has some issues or criteria that they want to see met for bus turning movements on that site, obviously. And so that will be part of the ongoing discussions with the developer to ensure that those requirements are being met, so. As you'll see from the recommendation, one of the conditions notes that the. Final alignment of Ardro Avenue and in particular, you know, how it connects into the school district property is subject to a final review and approval by the city engineer. And then lastly, the city staff did meet with the school district and the developer to talk about the road. The school district is aware of their or does have a requirement to contribute towards the cost of the construction of this road. That was part of their deal to purchase the property in the first place. But ultimately, there needs to be an agreement in place to work that out, which will be a private agreement, but ultimately. Get implemented once the city has a project and and move forward with a subdivision agreement on this site, so again, it's. The the road itself will be the responsibility of the developer, but ultimately, they'll need to work with the school in determining the appropriate cost share for the project. So with that, I don't think I have a lot more. So with that, I don't think I have a lot more. Staff is recommending approval of all three elements that have been requested, including the zoning map amendment, preliminary PUD master plan and then preliminary plant. Uh, you have a series of conditions in, in your uh, packet, which includes no conditions for the zoning map, but four conditions for the preliminary plant. And then twenty-seven conditions for the PUD master development plan. Uh, and it does sound like a lot of conditions, however, you'll note that a lot of those uh, conditions and requirements are all related to either the PUD exceptions. Uh, the road construction or kind of typicals uh, requirement that the city has in place uh, to ensure that things are being followed up properly, um, should this move forward. Uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I would like to note that uh, Brian Thies with um, Camerac Land Development. And then Marty Campion with Pioneer Engineering are both in attendance and I believe have been elevated to participants. And will be able to answer questions from the planning commission as well.
Thank you, Kyle. Are there any questions from the commission at this time? Yes, Commissioner Reed.
All right, um, Kyle, a few questions. One, can you pull up the landscape plan for the south side? Uh, which would be, you know, adjacent to the railroad tracks. Okay, it looked like there was a, a deficit on the caliper piece. And when looking at the landscape plan of the south side, it seemed somewhat bare of trees. And I'm wondering if. If you, we've considered a recommendation to add more trees in that sou- southern area there.
At this point, staff had not made that recommendation. I think at the planning question, believe there should be some additional trees there. We can work with the applicant on, on doing just that. Um, they are showing a few trees down there and. One of the concerns we would have is that as we get into the stormwater pining areas, we want to make sure that the trees aren't going in an area that's needed for maintenance or in, you know, otherwise. Impacting uh, the ability of the stormwater pond to function properly. So there is a condition that notes that, um, I think we'd be happy to, to work with the applicant, um, and with our engineer to ensure that there's some locations there that maybe could work.
Uh, it, it's assuming the other commissioners supported that. I mean, how would we, how would we adjust kind of what we've got, what we're requesting here in conditions?
Um, I think one of the conditions notes or talks about the landscape plan, we could certainly add something to note to state that the applicant shall um, plant some additional trees along the railroad right away.
Hey Kyle, I do just want to note too that on the actual railroad property, even though it's not shown on there. Um, there is significant greenery, um, and. You know, trees that do screen the, the development area from the south.
I'm trying to find the air photograph here. Yeah. So this is what we're looking at there. So. Thank you. Anthony pointed out, um, the, you know, survey doesn't show a lot of these trees because those are located within the railroad right away. So they're not showing up on some of the surveys that you see.
I would agree with Commissioner Reed, though. I think if there's, if there is some area to, to try and add some more in, um. I think the deviation is, is condition eight, and I think the revised landscape plan is condition J. I, I would like to see us try and add, add some in where it makes sense and try and get it a little bit less of a, um. Deviation on the trees.
Yeah, and I think ideally, based on the staff recommendation, they would be hopefully preserving some of those additional um, trees. So that would reduce the, the mitigation on those. Um, but that would, you know, by keeping the, the number in place, they would be able to get that up a little closer to what our standard is.
Um, a couple of quick things. What one, I know there's uh, the parks recognition. Did that recommend um, a park be here that there, there'd be a um. Uh, can we, what they call a contribution instead? Uh, but that the school that'll be just the east there is highly likely to be a park in that area, right? Adjacent to the school when they build out?
Uh, that is correct. I mean, obviously the, the, the elementary school will have some facilities uh, that are available for recreation and our parks director has. Discuss the possibility of working with the school district to do some sort of a shared uh, feature or shared amenity on that property.
And, and then the last kind of trails parks question, um, I, I know we've, we've got the, the easement on the north side for potential east-west. Um, path on, on Bonner there. Um, and I know we've talked about this in the past, um. I'm trying to get a handle on what is the. Way somebody would go from west to east, say that to Flint Hills soccer fields over there. And so if you, you, you're saying, looking at this new development, for example, we're putting a lot in there. And kids want to go east to the soccer fields. Is there a path they would go? Are they going to go on? Uh, I have to go on Bonner where there's no, no bike trail, it's fifty miles an hour.
Well, right, given that this is an area that's, that's undergoing rapid change. I mean, that's going to change a little bit, but right now. Assuming this is built out and nothing else changes out there, uh, they would end up coming into the school district property and, and not really having a place to go at the present time. You know, ultimately, Caromar Crossing will have some sidewalks and trails going through its development, running to the east and west. So. Technically, you could come up our door avenue, uh, cross Bonner Path and then get into this development and get over there. Uh, also, when a school is, is building or has built its property, I think there's an expectation that there would be some connections coming into the school district property as well. We brought that up with them and I think there's an agreement that it would make sense to make some connections into their uh, area as well to provide. Access for children coming to the school.
Yeah, I know it's not a condition for, for this approval, but I think, you know, bigger picture. We do need to start thinking what is going to be our plan for that east route whilst west path there. Uh, we've talked about that easement and on uh, Bonner. And so I'm curious, you know, when, what is the plan to actually put that walkway in there and timing and. And, you know, just I guess think of it from um, a pedestrian experience view. Uh, what is a pedestrian experience going to be like getting from west to east here, for example? Uh, and kids going to see soccer games, things like that.
Yeah, I think ultimately staff has talked about that and I think there is an agreement that long-term there should be some sort of trail facility along Bonner Path, given the traffic levels and the, the type of improvements. And amenities that we locate in this area. Uh, the reality is that, you know, as of right now, there hasn't been trail along Bonner Path, partly because there's some restrictions as you get over to the west here with the uh, with the water bodies and some restrictions there. Um, but then ultimately, you know, as Akron Avenue is getting built out, there are trails on both sides of that road. Uh, so there is a possibility to tie into those, again, to get access up here. Then long-term, the challenge is always going to be, you know, how you get people across both Akron Avenue and Bonner Path with higher traffic levels and the lack of signalization and um, potential crossing points here. Um, as you may recall, there is a underpass under Akron Avenue that's been built by the county as part of that project. Uh, so it will be, you know, a decent way to get over to the fields if you want to come up through uh, the Caromar Crossing development. Uh, but again, there's going to be several years of build out there and even that's probably not ideal from the perspective of folks down here. So I guess duly noted by staff that uh, ultimately there should be some broader uh, or regional uh, connection system here on Bonner Path.
Yeah, and, and then my last question is, is kind of want to play devil's advocate for a little bit on the. The backyard setbacks. You know, we um. We've gone, you know, we've seen thirty now, you know, twenty-five and now this one, eh, twenty yard setbacks. Um, so you know, the, again, devil's advocate, right? When does it stop? You know, what, what, did, did, did we push back as he planning to say? Hmm, the rest of this area here has the larger setbacks. Should we? Push for a twenty-five yard or do we just go with the flow here because it's a market?
I had a commissioner, I had a similar um, comment on that written down as well. I was concerned on the. We continue to, to creep down, um, and so what, maybe you can point out to us, Kyle, are. Are all of the yards twenty yard setbacks? Is it just some? I know, and sometimes in the past, we've had. Only, you know, certain lots that had that and the majority were, were more.
Hmm. Yeah, I just want to ask the developer that question because that was part of their request. Um, and I'm not sure if they had, had um. Made that request for a specific reason. Staff did note that um, looking at the um, this particular area where you have the single family homes that back up against the townhouse units. Uh, these particular lots are the narrowest or the, the shallowest lots, I should say, from a depth perspective within the subdivision. Uh, but then there's this area behind the townhouses that is open space. And so. You know, our initial thought was that the applicant probably was asking for some reduced setbacks here, recognizing that there is, you know. Going to be open space between and, and then back of those units uh, long-term. It doesn't appear that they would need the twenty-five foot setback for most of those single family lots, though. Uh, so again, I think that's a question for the developer. Uh, and staff would um, certainly support a recommendation that only certain lots would receive the twenty-five foot setback and the rest would have to meet the, the standard setback.
Okay. Commissioner Reed, did you have any other comments or questions at this time?
No, and I'll give up the floor to uh, Commissioner Rivera here, but I just, the last thing is, yeah, so we, we should probably talk about how we word, word that condition, right? But I, I kind of like where you went with that, Kyle.
I think my question is, um. Do we have a timeframe of when that elementary school is going to be built or is it based on um. Expanding population in that area as far as um, the student ratio?
Um, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission, I'm not sure I can answer that question directly. Um, we met with the school district, um, you know, the funding is the big question with that. And so. There does need to be ultimately a referendum at some point in the future before that school will be built. I think just generally speaking, and Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, I think they were looking at the five to ten-year timeframe for school construction. And I'm not sure, I mean, it's partly based on uh, the changing demographics in the area. So I think. The way they have been with growth and development in this area, they're certainly going to be looking to build that school, um, pending some disaster, some massive slowdown in the rate of. Construction taking place out there.
Commissioner Smith.
Uh, just a, a quick memory jogger as we put more and more people. In that area, what is the plan for or the outlook? For traffic control on, on Akron and Bonner?
I would defer to the city engineer on, on that question. I believe I, I saw Brian here.
It's, yeah, there's that signal light too that comes out by Robert. That was kind of one of the other key things.
Uh, in, in each of those cases, it's going to be driven by traffic warrants. Um. You know, one, one case um, to the west will be, you know, Robert Trail, Trunk Highway Three, that again, that's uh. That'll be the state and then the Akron. Uh, if that one ever was to see something different would be driven by the county. Um, in each case that it, it. It, it, I'll say traffic warrants. Um, probably the best way to explain that is the amount of traffic that's at each of those intersections is what would drive. The installation of either different traffic control, for example, four-way stop. Um, a roundabout, uh, or again, signal lights. So. It, it's hard to make that. You know, it's hard to put a timeline on it because again, it is, it, it would be driven by development and the traffic through those intersections.
Madam Chair, I, I would say Brian and I were on a meeting with the county um, and state because they're going to do a project on highway three, uh, an assessment. Which will include looking at that intersection, but at this point, that area that um, the Bonner Highway Three is, is not close to warrants. But we did raise that issue and there will be a study. Going on, hmm, probably over the next year, year and a half. That'll at least provide better feedback um, when these answers come up. Not related to the Akron and Bonner, but the, the highway three one.
The, the light at, at Akron and forty-two will be in, is it next year?
Yep.
Yes.
Summer.
Yep.
That'll help a lot.
Yep.
Are there any other comments or questions from the commission? Um, Kyle, can you just confirm this? I think I followed you correctly as we went through. The single family homes, those, those will be public streets maintained by the city. And then the townhouse section. That was kind of lower there, that is. Private street in that area that they would have like a homeowners association or something that would maintain. Is that correct?
That's correct. The only I would add to that is that because there's utilities that are public that are going into that area, the city will have easements for those public utilities to maintain access and ability to maintain in those areas.
Okay, thank you. And then I think my other um, kind of comments and questions that I had, have been covered, I um. Kind of agree with Commissioner Reed and the tree replacement, I think that um. Be nice to, to bring those trees up, um, and then the rear yard setbacks. I'd like to hear more from the developer on that. So if there's no other comments or questions from the commission at this time, I can open the public hearing. Last call for comments or questions. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing for this item. Anyone in attendance this evening is. Welcome to speak at this time. We do ask that you state your name and address for the record. If you would like to speak, you may do so by raising your hand on the Zoom app. And you will be called on when it's your turn to speak. Um, and we will um, unmute you and you will be able to unmute yourself on your device and speak to the commission just as if we were all sitting in. In the city hall chambers this evening. So with that, um, I know Brian and Marty from um, the applicants are on the line and we did have a couple of questions. Or um, at least a question for you guys regarding rear yard setbacks. Um, and we also have talked about the tree replacement. So maybe. If one of you wants to start by addressing those.
I'm going to be uh, promoting them to panelists so that they can speak freely.
Thank you, Anthony.
Okay, Brian, Marty and Dale, uh, feel free to unmute your microphones and you can address the commission.
Uh, hi, this is uh, Brian Tice with uh, Camerac Land Development. Um, thanks Kyle for the, the overview of the project. Um. Uh, as far as the um, tree preservation plan and landscape plan goes, those are all something um. Are happy to um, look at with staff and see how we can um, what we can do to revise the plan to, to make that uh, those um, those things happen. Um, we're certainly willing to try to save as many of the significant trees as we can. Um, and if we've got to add some um. To the, to the southern part of the site up against railroad tracks, we can certainly um, look into that and work with staff on that. As far as the setbacks go, I'd have to um, review that a little bit uh, with our builder. Our builder is uh, D R Horton on this project. Um, I assume that that request came from them to be able to meet their product needs. Um, I'll admit, I wasn't around um, when those discussions started to be initiated with um, D R Horton, um, but we can certainly um, certainly look at that.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission at this time for the developer? Or for the applicant, I should say. Represent multiple, multiple areas of expertise. Okay, seeing none, at this time, we will open up the public hearing um, to others that would like to speak. I am, we did have a couple of comments come in. Um, this evening via chat, I will um, briefly read those. We did not receive any letters um, prior to the meeting on this item this evening. However, we do have a couple of chat um, comments that have come in from some that are not able to unmute. So I will start with. A um, letter from Luke Nickel, third grade resident at one three five seven nine Athena Way. I do not like the idea of taking away the cornfield in the woods. I love to adventure in the woods and cornfields. I like to watch the farmer harvest the corn for a living. I do not think you should take away the cornfield and put houses there from Luke Nickel. Um, then I got the following from Mark and Jennifer Nickel, residents at one three five seven nine Athena Way. We have enjoyed living in our home for the last ten years. Having the open area behind our home. Was a selling point and one of the reasons we bought our home. Having the peaceful land behind our home has given us joy over the years. As we've spent spring, summer and fall mornings on our deck, enjoying the peace and quiet that Rosemont offers. It would be sad to see yet another development populate this area of our beautiful city. It would certainly encourage us to consider moving to another area. Please consider this when making your decision. Mark and Jen Nickel. And then another comment also from Mark Nickel. Um, it certainly looks like this plan is moving forward in some form. We strongly believe that the applicant should be replacing all the trees that will be lost. The current level of tree loss is rather significant. So with that, that um, takes care of all of the comments we have received. Um, in writing at this time, and Anthony, if you have anyone that would like to speak.
Yep, Ken Roy has uh, raised his hand. So Ken, at this time, if you have uh, cash, question or comment, feel free to share it with the commission.
Yes, God, this is Kenneth Roy from one three six zero seven Athena Way. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
I just have three comments and kind of one question, I guess. Uh, my first comment is. Thank you for the kind of postponing um, your, your detail of, of the, to plan development. We. In the letter that we got, it said nothing of the, of a, a Zoom call. So we. Were at the, at the city hall trying to get in, couldn't get in. My second uh, comment is regards to the sidewalk, um, no sidewalk along Bonner. Um, I know that Kyle Plaidet's mentioned that, that it needs to be part of the long-term plan. We. We've been living here for about 11 years and been walking on Bon Air for, for those 11 years. And when we first started walking, we would never see cars along Bon Air heading west to Akron. Now, when we go for a walk, it's non-stop cars. And you know, if with the school potentially going in and the development to the north of Bon Air, on two developments to the north on Bon Air, a sidewalk from Bacardi to Akron is critical with the school there. You know, I, I think it's the planning job, well, commission's job to kind of plan for this and to kind of get this done before school goes in there. Because God forbid that someone, you know, there is no way to get to those fields or to the school from developments to the north, from Bacardi to, to Akron. And I think some sort of sidewalk is critical and needs to be a part of the now plan, not the long-term plan before the school goes in for that. My second, my third comment is, it is, I do kind of find the number of trees that they're taking along that west boundary rather alarming. I'm a landscire and there is a private parcel that is to the west of that parcel that is outlaw F of the Meadow Woods. And there's a, and that, that parcel's kind of triangular shape and it goes to a, it kind of, there's a point to where the, where there's a little bump out in the turn of Auburn Avenue. And that's a private owner. So in those trees are, it doesn't surprise me that there's some heritage trees around there. There's barbed wire fence in some of those trees as you box south towards the railroad that, that indicate that, you know, that they are, they are or near the, what was thought to be the property line. So I would, I would kind of question the applicant's right to take those trees that are either on or over or the boundary line without talking with that particular owner to the west. And then my last, those are my three comments. And then my last question is, there's a current bump out. So that second road, the southerly most road that is coming off of Akron, okay? That off of Auburn, I'm sorry, off of Auburn from the west. There's a current little bump out that writes, that's right there. And if you look at the county website, the applicant does not have access to that bump out. That bump out is part of that outlaw F that formed that triangle to the north. So my question is, is are they moving the, have they negotiated with that owner to the west? Or where that current bump out is, or is that road being moved north?
Thank you, Ken. Kyle, can we maybe start with addressing that bump out? Can you comment on that at all?
I can. In short, yes, it's moving to the north. The applicant was not successful at working with that property owner to provide access across that site into the development parcel. So their proposal is to eliminate that existing curb cut, move it to the north entirely on their, their property and then to replace curb and so forth down there where they'd be taking it out. So that's the short answer. And I can show you a map if you want to see exactly what that looks like.
I would, I, it looked like it was just from the maps that you had shown, but I just wanted to kind of, to kind of see, you know, what the case was there. And, and, and you know, what happens to the existing sort of bump out? That's the curb and the pavement that is currently there.
Let's see here, so this kind of shows a little better, I think. And it's, I know it's real small, but this is the new alignment. The existing alignment's coming in down here.
Right.
And so they're, they would be required to replace the curb gutter, everything that's in there right now to basically build it back so it looks like it matches everything else. And there'd be a new entrance up here. Basically, it just, it moves north. And all that work is done within city right away. So they're, they don't have any issues with going on private property to do that.
I just wanted to assure that, that's all. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle, there was also a comment about tree removal and some trees that maybe were not on their property, but in that corner outlot, that triangular outlot. I would assume that that, that trees that aren't on their property are not going to be removed.
Yeah, so this is the, I wanted to throw that too. Thank you for bringing that up. So this is the triangular outlot that was being discussed, I believe. And then just keep in mind that when the developer submits an application, they're required to survey trees on their property. So what we see here is, you know, an inventory of all the trees on their property. And this is, I know, very small for you to see, but all these little gray things in here are those trees that are being inventory tagged and marked them for the property. And so if there are additional trees on the west side of that fence or of the property line, those would not have an inventory and obviously the developer is not able to do, touch those or go into there. So I do want to stress that when I'm, you know, I think I said several times that the developer proposing to remove all trees on their property, that doesn't mean that there won't be some trees that, that still remain that are on those, those adjacent sites. It's just, it's kind of hard to tell at the scale we have with the air photographs and everything exactly where that is without going on the site and knowing exactly where that property line is. So I think, you know, again, to stress, if there's any trees on that property now that's offsite, those won't be touched and those won't be disturbed by the applicant.
Thank you for clarifying and confirming that. And then, you know, I think we've talked about it as a commission before the public hearing and it was brought up here as well, the sidewalk on Bon Air. And I know you've referenced a plan for it in the future and, and things like that. But what is, how does that move forward? How do we move that forward? What are the criteria that, that are taken into consideration to, to get that sidewalk put in there?
Madam Chair, in fact, the, that issue even came up today at the department head meeting with the Park and Rec Director. So it's really kind of a combination of his work and, you know, public work, so to speak. And what we've been doing similar to this project is requiring them to bench or grade Bon Air to allow for the trail. So that's also occurring on the north end. And so we are going to be looking at cost and timing associated with its installation. However, as you'll note in this plan, we also have the trail on the south end, which we anticipate a lot of the neighborhoods south of Bon Air, but west of the site will actually traverse through their neighborhood on sidewalks. You know, they're not going to go up and over and down. They're going to go through. And so, you know, sometimes we're going to, well, we're going to have multiple options, I guess. And certainly the Bon Air would be more of a trail system rather than a sidewalk system so that, you know, it can take people along that corridor. But we are making sure that we've also got neighborhood links that can be used for the school when that gets installed.
Okay, so for the, for the residents, the gentleman who has been here for many years and walking on Bon Air and seeing the traffic, it is, there are some plans to keep that moving forward at this time.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Ken Roy raised his hand once more.
Okay, sounds good.
So you can go ahead if you have another comment.
I do, thank you. I appreciate you coming back to me. I just, Kyle had said that the trees will only be, only trees that are removed that are on the, the applicant's property. And I just want to, I just want to clarify my question. What about trees that are on both properties that, you know, there, there's some 36 inch trees, huge trees where the boundary line goes through the tree and has a barbed wire fence in it, portions thereof. What happens to those trees? How do they handle those trees? Are those removed too? Or planned to be removed?
I am just pulling up the, the plan right now. So I don't, the trees that are, that are surveyed and that are counted here all look like they're entirely on the property. So I guess that would be a question for the surveyor that did that work was how many they, they came across that were on the property line. My guess is here that those were treated as either offsite or not impacted by the development. But it's something I can certainly clarify if there's some question about that and how that gets, gets implemented in the field.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ken. Is there anyone else in attendance this evening that would like to speak on this item?
Madam Chair, I don't see any.
Okay, thank you, Anthony. Are there any questions for the developer before we close the public hearing from the commission? I thought we couldn't go back to them, but anything at the moment? Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Commissioner Freeman.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schmiedek. Stacy, will you take role?
Reed.
Hi.
Freeman.
Hi.
Rivera.
Schmiedek.
Hi.
Marlo.
Hi.
Kenninger.
Hi.
Public hearing is now closed. We will come back to this item at hand. Are there any comments or questions from the commissioners at this time?
Yeah, Kyle, can you clarify one thing for me? We talked about this, the backyard setback. But when I look at, was page 65 of my document with the table with the comparisons and the table shows Arden Place minimum rear yard setback at 20 feet. But in the conditions, I thought it said 25 there.
Yeah, I believe it should be 25 feet. It's possible that was a typo in the chart. I'm just going back to the applicant's drawing here to see what they had requested.
Yeah, motion, condition G does state, good catch, Commissioner Reed, that it's rear yard setback to 25 feet.
Oh, they, they did request a 20 foot rear yard setback.
Wow.
So I guess they're requesting, I think staff was not comfortable going down that narrow or that, that much of reduction, which is why, you know, the recommendation was for 25 feet.
Okay, so, because I think, I don't, I don't want to speak for Commissioner Reed, but I know I was uncomfortable with the 20 foot. And I think he's shaking his head as he was too. So, so what we're saying here is we're not, we're, we're not granting the 20 foot. We recommend a, the recommendation from staff and what's in our packet for conditions is 25 feet.
Yes, that is correct. So I, I'm sorry for not clarifying that a little better, both in the staff report and my presentation. But you are right, the, what, what staff is recommending is included in the conditions of approval, which would be 25 feet.
Okay, well, that takes care of, I am not as concerned with that. I think that's in, in alignment to what we've done elsewhere. Commissioner Reed?
Yeah, I like that. Thank you.
Okay.
And thank you, Commissioner Reed, for clarifying that.
So that takes care of that. I do, as some of that conversation has gone here tonight, I, I think it would be good to try and find some additional, additional ways to add in some trees or save existing trees to, to not have such a deviation on the caliber inches that are being replaced. So I don't know, Kyle, if we just add that into H and J or how you want to address that? I would like to make that recommendation. Does anybody else have comments or feelings on that?
Madam Chair, I, I think condition J is where I would recommend adding that. And basically, we'd be stating that they need to add additional plantings or preservation of existing trees along the western property boundary and the southern property boundary or railroad right away, however you want to word that.
Well, it, Madam Chair, I think what we'll do is try to work with the developer, figure out a number and then modify H to reflect that change.
Right.
And I would honestly, I would be opposed to offer any more trees on the southern end just from the railroad aspect, working for a railroad. It's just nice not to have that extra added barrier and visibility along the railroad right away. So I think the railroad right away as it is now is, is the way I think it should stay.
But the railroad's a bit elevated there. I, I mean, I think it makes more sense to put the trees between like the ponds and the residence. You know, where you get your best bang for your buck for the people who live here. Because the, the people to the south aren't really going to be overly impacted by this development because of the tracks in between. So I think, you know, the, the, I mean, generally, our goal would be to try to buffer the tracks, I guess, you know, from, from the, the future residents as well as just beautify, you know, the whole neighborhood. So I think there's some opportunities more in that, in that open space, but not necessarily immediately adjacent to the railroad. Especially because there's a fair amount of a drop for the pond. You know, so you're on, you're kind of on a downslope.
I think I would be comfortable with not locking the people into exactly where they have to go as much as just saying, we would like to see an increase in the trees. I, I think I'm, I'm agreeing that staff should probably just work with the developer to do the best they can to increase that replacement.
I agree. That makes the most sense.
Yeah, I would agree as well. And I think then mentioning that, that H will be adjusted based on that because I don't like to approve H allowing that large deviation.
Works.
Are there any other comments or questions on this item this evening?
I'll just say, I think I'm in favor of the plan. I do think we, we have to have a clear, maybe it's a two-year plan to have that pedestrian right away or trails that go, that go further east connecting to like Flint Hills and to the path there on Akron. We've got a nice path in Akron. I think, you know, too, that, you know, that whole, I mean, on one hand, I'm worried about the traffic. It's considered, she was like, asked about traffic going west to, to Robert because it's only bad there. But I think, you know, this will help. Well, hopefully the traffic will go to the east where they can and down south on Akron. And having that light there will help maybe start attracting more of the traffic movement in that direction.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. I would agree. I'm also in favor of this. I do, do think we need to work on that on air sidewalk. I think it makes sense with, you know, we've got a, you know, five to 10 year plan with the school going in. I do, I do feel for, for Luke and losing his cornfield. But unfortunately, we are tasked with, with reviewing the plans that the landowner and developer bring to us. And the landowner is looking to, to develop the property. And so that is what we, what we consider and do. Any other?
Just real quick to, I, I guess I really appreciate Luke being a third grader, being willing to put his input in. And I am sorry that he's losing the cornfield. And I agree with you and Commissioner Reed that we really have to look at that path along Bon Air. My wife and I drive that road, boy, an awful lot. And there are a lot of people that walk along that road and it's kind of scary.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Rivera.
I too am, am for the development. I think Rosemont is definitely moving in the right direction here for expansion to opportunities for other folks to purchase and move to Rosemont. I do have somewhat of a reservation about the traffic increase as well. It's unfortunate. I know that traffic study is what's required in order to move forward in some of this aspect. However, in order to have increased traffic, then you have to build up the neighborhood. And then building up the neighborhood causes increased traffic. And then only to approve something later on after the traffic's already there. Obviously, things don't happen quickly when it comes to remedies of that. So it's unfortunate that we can't consider that ahead of time instead of after the fact and be more proactive about that.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Freeman.
I don't really have anything to.
I don't really have anything too different to add. I, I really agree with what has been already stated here in regards to the, the trail of slash sidewalk connections on Bon Air. I mean, I think we all have tried. I mean, I walked down that road a couple of weeks ago, and it was difficult and had to keep going up on the, on the grass as well. I mean, it's, it's, it's a huge issue. And I also, I do support the, the development. I think it, you know, makes sense. And, and I do agree that we really need to reduce the variance in the caliber inches for the missing trees. And so I'm glad to see that we're trying to do everything we can there, because yeah, six hundred and seventy is out of.
Like four hundred and some short.
Yeah, it's, it's a huge variance. So I definitely support that we need to make up at least as much of that difference as we can. So that's all I have.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna bug you more time, Madam Chair. This is probably a question for the developer, but when they, when they say single-story homes, are those true single-story homes? Or are they modified single-stories, so they're kind of a split level inside? Because I think the one thing that we need a little more of in Rosemont here are, are true single stories for seniors and those that don't have the ability to do stairs all the time.
Anthony, do we still have the applicants as panelists? Can they still speak?
Brian and Dale are still, still able to speak freely. They just have to unmute themselves.
Brian or Dale, could one of you address that question from Commissioner Schmuzak?
Sure, I can try to address that. DR Horton's our builder. These are, yeah, these are more or less a traditional single-story home. I, I believe Reed with DR Horton might be on the thing. He might be able to specifically answer that question.
Thank you. Reed, Reed, I see you've been changed to a panelist. If you can unmute and answer, that would be great.
There he is. Oh, you're muted, Reed.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
We can.
All right, great. Well, first and foremost, I appreciate you guys' time and, and listening to the Tamarack development here. As you guys are, are familiar with, we're in the process of building our Caremore Crossing project just to the north of this. So this will complement that project very nicely. So I'll touch a little bit on some of the questions regarding our building. So this project is a, what we call our raised ranch product. It was originally proposed in our Caremore Crossing project way back when it subsequently was removed from that project. And replaced with our traditional two stories for Caremore Crossing. And now we see a tick of popularity and the need for this type of a product back into the market here in the Twin Cities. So I think it's a great opportunity to introduce this product back in. This product is a, what you would probably call is a modified split level type product. Main level living facilities, including kitchen, dining, living room. And then it splits to either go downstairs or upstairs for additional living and sleeping spaces. So upstairs, it's got a nice master suite, en suite bathroom with a couple bedrooms and a secondary bathroom upstairs. And then downstairs is an option for it to be finished with an additional bedroom or left unfinished or some different varieties thereof. So it's a great product. So to answer the question, it's kind of a modified one or two-story product. To answer the commissioner's questions about the needs for single living, our Caremore Crossing project does have our Freedom Homes, which are geared towards our empty nester product. So they're a main level living. All service areas are on the single level. So master suite on there, kitchen, dining, living, laundry facilities and all that on a single level. So that product's just to the northeast of this project, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Schmuzak, did that answer your question or any other comments from that?
No, no, he answered it very well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions on this item this evening? We could entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just, Mr. Ken Roy asked about the two roads coming off out on path in the chat from the west and wondering if that, if they're too close and present a potential traffic pattern problem. That was kind of hard for me to say the two Ps in a row. Sorry. And I just wanted, I, I could have responded, typed it, but I thought, wow, if you guys see it. We, we do have our city engineer review the separation. And so it, it's, it's fine as spaced. And I guess the other thing is because, because the school is next to this, the, it's a very discreet neighborhood. You know, you're not really driving through this neighborhood. Your, the intention is to not drive through, so that the traffic numbers aren't going to be all that high either in that area. So it's really, it's really very localized traffic, but it does meet the separation requirements.
Thank you, and thank you for calling that out to everyone's attention. With that, we could entertain a motion on this item this evening with a reminder of how we converse on modifying J and H respectively. Commissioner Schmuzak.
Madam Chair, I'll make the first motion then to recommend the city council approve a zoning map amendment to rezone fifty-two point one nine acres from AG Agricultural to R1 PUD, low-density residential planned unit development and R2 PUD moderate-density residential planned unit development.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Schmuzak and seconded by Commissioner Freeman. Stacy, will you take role?
Kenninger.
Hi.
Marlo.
Hi.
Freeman.
Hi.
Schmuzak.
Hi.
Rivera.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Motion passes, and we have two, two motions on this, right? So we've got one more to do. Before I move on to that second one, I just do want to state for everybody that this will move forward to, our first motion that has passed will move forward to the city council meeting on November seventeenth. And if the second motion passes, it will also move forward to city council on November seventeen. And with that, I would entertain a motion on item number two.
Madam Chair, there's three motions, I believe.
Oh, where am I seeing the third one? Oh, sorry, the third is the big one. Sorry. Thanks for catching that. I thought there was three and I only was seeing two. Okay, on the second motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to say too, I mean, we would aim for the meeting in November, but given the direction from the planning commission and the action that the council needs, I think we're going to have to have, you know, the revised landscaping are, are pretty much all done to be able to reflect that for the, the council's final approval. So that may slide if the applicant, or else they have to be quick about it.
Perfect. Thank you for calling that out. So the candidate's city council meeting would be November seventeenth. That may push out. So the best thing to do would be to watch the city website and agendas for updates on that. Okay, and motion two. Commissioner Freeman.
I'll move to recommend the city council approve the preliminary platform Arden Place, subject to conditions A through E.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Freeman and seconded by Commissioner Schmuzak. Stacy, will you take role?
Kenninger.
Hi.
Marlo.
Hi.
Freeman.
Hi.
Schmuzak.
Hi.
Rivera.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
And the motion passes. And the third motion on this, which is one with the H and J conditions to be modified or updated.
Can we clarify? So, and this motion, currently condition H, we use a deviation from city code to reduce the required tree replacement for, for remove trees from eleven fourteen to six seventy. Are we just going to strike that one?
Madam Chair, Mr. Planning Commission, I think what would happen is that we would adjust that based on the revised landscape plan. So that number should go up then, basically, that they're adding more caliber inches.
Is, is that, is that based on the fact, because we have J in there, where it's, they're going to submit a revised plan?
Yes.
That'll get modified. You know what the commission is looking for, so.
Yeah, basically, what's going to happen is they're going to, hopefully, they're going to preserve some trees, that overall number to be removed goes down. And then the number to be replaced either goes up or down based on what that, how that ends up taken out. So, so yes, those, there are two numbers in the, both those will be adjusted based on revised landscape plan.
So maybe we just need to make, in addition to condition J, that states that, that in addition to working with staff on preserving trees, the commission is requesting to increase the amount of trees on the lot. And as a result, the, the caliber inches deviation in condition H would be appropriately adjusted. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that sounds right.
Is everybody comfortable with that? Okay, so how about I give this a try? I will make a motion to recommend the city council approve the planned unit development, master development plan with rezoning of the property from AG Agricultural to R1 PUD, low-density residential planned unit development and R2 PUD, moderate-density residential planned unit development, subject to conditions A through AA with a edit to condition J to add in that in addition to working with city staff to preserve existing trees, the developer will also work with city staff to increase the number of trees. And as a result, condition H should be modified appropriately to increase the caliber inches of six seventy to something greater than six seventy and close to one thousand one hundred and fourteen.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kenninger and seconded by Commissioner Reed. Stacy, will you take role?
Kenninger.
Hi.
Marlo.
Hi.
Freeman.
Hi.
Schmuzak.
Hi.
Rivera.
Rivera.
Sorry, hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Motion passes. That concludes this item this evening. All three motions have passed and will move forward to city council after city staff is able to work with them appropriately on the edits from tonight's meeting. That concludes our public hearing section of the meeting tonight. Are there any items for discussion?
I just wanted to mention a couple of things, kind of housekeeping items. Next month, we have our planning commission meeting is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. Since nobody can go anywhere, I'm assuming you'll all be here. We'll have the subdivision ordinance back for a public hearing. And we're hoping to start having some of the mining, the annual mining applications in. I'm not sure we are expecting a lot more else. I think we're hoping to potentially try to batch things in November or maybe in January and take off December. Just for everybody's recollection, the December meeting is the fifteenth. So it's, you know, an unusual day. Wait, is that right, Stacy? Was it Monday? It's not right.
I think it is.
I think it's the fourteenth.
I think it's the fourteenth, too.
Oh, yeah, sorry. It's a Monday, whatever that Monday is.
Yeah, so it's the fourteenth. I apologize. So just so you've got that in your head. Also, wanted to let you know if, if we didn't mention it, that council member or planning commission member Pam Vanderweal retired. I can't remember. Did that happen before last meeting?
No, it happened right after the last meeting.
Okay.
And before we had the city, the joint meeting with the city council.
Many of you know. So given that we're close to the deadline for when we go out and ask for new applications, I think we're just going to kind of roll with this because we tend to appoint new people in March. And so they'll be getting applications in this December-January time period. And so we would just take applications to fill that position. I did happen to look, although now have written it down and lost where I left it. I think, Gretchen, are you up? I can look at this super quickly. No, I can't.
I think it's just me.
Uh, no, it's two. Gretchen and Mike are up March twenty twenty-one. So love to see you again. You'll be getting a, you'll be getting a note from our city clerk or me about reapplying. And then finally, I do want to just maybe mention that we also are going to work on several other text amendments over the winter. So Anthony's got a very long list of items. He's chugging through, again, in part just to address things that seem to come up through our course of conversation about these items. You know, and for example, one of them tonight, I think there's for, further discussion is about the trees. For example, I'm all, I, I've been a firm believer on all trees are good when you want them screening your neighborhood. But if you looked at a lot of the trees that are on the site, they aren't trees that we would even allow people to install. They certainly provide some screening, but I think there's some, you know, a lot of cities look at kind of value, both in terms of size, but also in species. And that might be something we may want to take a look at in terms of the, the replacement criteria, simply because you end up with volunteer vegetation. You know, that maybe isn't something you would have normally really wanted to keep, like the Siberian elm and stuff. So I don't know, that's just something we might want to have a bit of a chat about, along with a variety of other things like home-based daycares. I don't know, we've got a whole list. So, and I guess if, if the commission has items that have come up or that seem to come up fairly often that you're interested in, we can certainly do some investigation on that also. So that's the preview.
And so all of that is, is planned for next November, Anthony's stuff too, or future out?
Some of it will.
Okay. Sounds good. So November twenty-fourth is our next regular meeting. No workshop in November, no second Tuesday. Correct. Okay.
Oh, and then get that on your calendar, too, December first. I think I mentioned that. It's most, I, I'm pretty sure that this will happen. So it's the council work session on Tuesday at five, I believe, will be the new developer for the Umore. So they'll do, people will meet him and he'll probably walk through the concept.
So that is Tuesday, December first at five PM, you said?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have a location yet?
No.
Okay.
I, I would guess the council chamber is simply because there's a regular meeting after the work session.
Okay.
So well, we will get you better information and obviously we'll see you next month, but I just want to get that on your calendar.
So November twenty-fourth, next meeting, December first, a joint meeting with city council on the Umore development. And then December fourteenth is potentially not going to be a meeting, but maybe we shouldn't. maybe we shouldn't clear our calendars quite so quickly.
Yes, that's exactly right.
We should, we will know that it's maybe tentative, but please continue to hold that date.
Yes.
Okay, anything else for discussion? I will just share, um, as we wrap up here, too, with Commissioner Vanderwill's retirement, um, from the planning commission. We do, she was our vice chair. Um, and so I've talked to city staff, and we will, um, be looking to elect a new vice chair at our next meeting. Um, just so that if I am unable to make a meeting, that we have a vice chair, um, appointed and elected. Anything else anyone has? Okay, with that, we will adjourn tonight's meeting. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.